Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, February 5th, 2013 at 6:30 PM. We're at the Palm Coast Community Center for the regularly scheduled meeting of Palm Coast City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as our government.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nitz.
Here.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Here.
Councilmember DiLorenzo.
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you. Before we start our agenda, I'd like to take a moment to introduce Mr. Luke Givens, who's the district aide to Representative Travis Hudson, who has established an office here in Palm Coast. Mr. Givens, where are you? You want to come up and say a couple of words?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, for the opportunity to address everybody here. It looks like you have a packed crowd. How about that?
There you go.
All right. Thanks, Mayor, and councilmembers, for the opportunity to address your packed house here. I'll keep my remarks to a minimum. I just wanted to make everybody aware that we do have our office here in Palm Coast. It's 4875 Palm Coast Parkway, and we look forward to servicing the community in any way we can. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the January 16th council meeting, the January 15th special council meeting, and the January 29th council workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion to approve?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number two, proclamation recognizing February 6th as Flagler Palm Coast News Tribune 100th Anniversary Celebration Day.
Whereas the Flagler Palm Coast News Tribune has been serving the residents of Flagler County for 100 years, and whereas 47,000 or six out of 10 Flagler County adults read the News Tribune each week, and whereas residents have come to depend on the quality journalism and in-depth coverage the News Tribune provides for the area, and whereas the News Tribune maintains a permanent office in Palm Coast that houses its Flagler team of reporters, photographers, advertising representatives, and office staff, and whereas local residents receive numerous quality-of-life enhancements provided by the News Tribune to include timely information, entertainment, advertisements, and coupons, newspaper and education programs in elementary schools, local nonprofit sponsorships, and more, and whereas local businesses are nurtured and strengthened by the advertising and marketing opportunities for the News Tribune and its related publications provided, and whereas a strong and relevant newspaper presence impacts Palm Coast, Flagler County, and Florida with considerable and wide-ranging benefits, and it is in everyone's interest to be informed of the direct and indirect benefits. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Palm Coast does hereby proclaim February 6th, 2013 as Flagler Palm Coast News Tribune 100th Anniversary Celebration Day, and urge residents to join the Palm Coast City Council in recognition of the benefits of the News Tribune to the community dated this 5th of February 2013. Signed, John Nitz, Mayor.
Anyone here from the News Tribune?
Nice try.
Do you want to say something?
Thank you, President.
Agenda item number three, proclamation recognizing February 15th through February 17th as White Cane Days. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Whereas the Palm Coast Lions Charities Incorporated is a member of District 35O of Lions International, and whereas the aforementioned Lions Charities Incorporated has a major project, the helping of sightless and the sight afflicted, and will contribute thousands of dollars and many hundreds of hours to this effort, and whereas this money will be contributed to the Conklin Center for the Multi-Handicapped Blind, North Florida Eye Bank, School for Leader Dogs, Braille Association of Mid-Florida, Florida School for the Deaf and Blind, Glaucoma and Diabetic Clinic Supplies, and fund visual examination and eyeglasses for needy schoolchildren and adult citizens of Palm Coast, and whereas the aforementioned Lions Club is sponsoring White Cane Days Friday through Sunday, February 15th, 16th, and 17th, 2013, to give the people of Palm Coast an opportunity to assist the Lions in this worthy project of helping the sight afflicted. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, urges all its citizens to support the worthwhile efforts of the Lions Club of Palm Coast, and be it further proclaimed that the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, in recognition of the contributions Lions Charities Incorporated has made to the citizens of Palm Coast, hereby officially declares February 15th, 16th, and 17th, 2013 as Lions White Cane Days dated this 5th day of February 2013. City of Palm Coast, Florida, John Nitz, Mayor. Accepting for this pride of Lions is?
President.
Senator Earnshaw. Well, I couldn't have said it better myself. You've covered everything.
I'm the president.
Yeah. So, look at the yellow vests, and you'll know who we are and what we're about doing. And I appreciate being here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're very much here.
Thank you.
Lions, thank you for your service to our community. Agenda item number four, a presentation on Government in the Sunshine and Public Records. This was requested by Councilman, Councilmember DiLorenzo. Mr. Reishman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember DiLorenzo, for giving me this opportunity to refresh not only all of you, but for those in the audience that may not be aware with the extensive laws that we have in the state of Florida to make sure that folks like you know what's going on in your local government. I think it's fair to say that the best government is the closest government in the state of Florida has chosen to ensure that. We have two sets of laws that require that the process of local government be open and transparent, and those are laws that you have read in the newspaper about and have heard about. It's called Government in the Sunshine and the Public Records Law. I think it's important to know that they are not the same. They are different laws, and they have different purposes and objectives. First, the Government in the Sunshine Law, or what we call the Sunshine Law. And I think what people may not understand, that while it is something that was created or codified by Tallahassee, the legislature, in the Florida statutes, it's also in our Florida Constitution. So, this is a constitutional right that mandates that the public has a right to know that how decisions are made by their government officials are in the public. And as I've said in the handout that I've provided to you, it's broader than a lot of people would think. It applies to any gathering of two or more, not just a quorum, but two or members of any local government, in this case, obviously, the city of Palm Coast City Council, that will discuss any matter that could foreseeably come before the city council. Not something that's on an agenda, but could foreseeably come. Extends to discussions, deliberations, informal as well as formal actions. Again, it's not the final decision, and I really like this sentence. This is actually out of an opinion from the Attorney General's office, and I really like this, and that's why I put it in this. I'm trying to keep this outline brief. We could sit here and talk for hours about Sunshine Law and Public Records. So, I've tried to hit the highlights, what I think's most relevant, talking about the themes and the objectives, as well as some recent issues that have come up involving these two laws. But I like this. It says that the courts have ruled that it is the how and the why officials decide to act which interests the public, not merely the final decision. And I thought that was a really good statement of what really the Constitution's about, that section of the Constitution, as well as Chapter 286. So, getting into the nuts and the bolts of it, given that that's the objective of the law that applies to counties and school boards and the cities and special districts, doesn't apply to the Florida Legislature. Sorry, I have to say that, but it doesn't apply to the people that wrote the law, but it applies to everybody else that's in government in the state of Florida. And I'm not saying it shouldn't apply to us. I'm thinking it might just want to apply going up, not just down. But it applies not just to oral communications, but to written communications. And at the bottom of the first page, and this is what I want to emphasize, that even though, you know, you have dinosaurs like me that prepare a handout like this and know how to use their phone to make phone calls, we've got technology in today's world that we didn't have two years ago, that we didn't have five years ago. And so, even though this law, this constitutional requirement, this statutory requirement certainly applies to two government officials or three government officials that can't get together and talk about government business outside of the sunshine, outside of the public, it also applies to any kind of communication, like electronic communications. And what we're talking about is all the things that are out there right now, and that's texting, emails, twittering, I'm not sure that's the right word for it, but tweeting, thank you. You've got social media. And so, just think about any way that two government officials could communicate, and they could go back on a blog, they could go back on an electronic bulletin board, social media like Facebook, or anything like that, that's a communication. And so, the bottom line is, you can't do it, you shouldn't do it, and don't do it. It's got to be a public meeting. So, you have a situation where you can't even, and you should not use any means to get around the law. For example, the Attorney General has ruled very clearly that Councilmember Smith can't talk to a secretary and direct that secretary to give a communication to Councilmember Jones, and then vice versa. That's a communication, even though it's not face-to-face, even as though it's not on the telephone, even though it's not direct back and forth, it's still a communication. That's called a liaison, and that's not allowed. It's important for the public, and all of you, I'm sure you know, and I think it's important for the public to understand that these councilmembers, when they come onto the council, they sit down with the city attorney, and the city clerk, and the city manager, and we go through this. We go through Government in the Sunshine and Public Records, and they all go to seminars given by state agencies. And I think we have two councilmembers that just came back, I believe either last weekend or the weekend before last, from the EMO Conference, where they get lectured for quite a long time. It's called the EMO Conference on Public Records and Government in the Sunshine. So, it's not something that a government official takes lightly, nor should they. It does not apply, and I think it's important for the public to understand, it applies to communications between members of the same board. Now, the city of Palm Coast has obviously a city council, that's what you're listening to tonight, but they also have a PLDRB, their Planning Commission, their P&amp;Z. That's a separate board. Now, those board members can't violate Government in the Sunshine by talking to each other, but a member of the planning board can talk about something with a member of the city council, because the rule doesn't apply to them. It's got to be two members of the same board. So, that Sunshine requirement does not apply to members of different boards talking together. Another issue that has come up recently are out-of-town meetings, and it's very clear that one of the requirements for compliance with Government in the Sunshine is that there has to be, that the meetings have to be open and reasonably available to the public. For example, there was, I think it was a school district some years ago, that decided that they were going to have a special meeting of their board while they were all attending a seminar, I think it was in Fort Lauderdale. Well, the school board was up in the panhandle. Well, that was a public meeting, and the Attorney General ruled that that was an inappropriate meeting, because there wasn't, you couldn't, it wasn't fair to the public that lived in, let's say it was Gilchrist County. It wasn't fair to the public to have them have to get on a bus, or a plane, or a train, or a car, and go down to Fort Lauderdale to attend this public meeting. So, that's an example where, again, common sense. These meetings have to be open to the public, have to be available to the public. That's why we have these meetings on Tuesdays here, so that folks like you can attend. You have to be careful with inspection trips. There was a school board that got in trouble in Seminole County because they were doing some redistricting, and so they thought that would, and it was probably a good idea, probably a real good idea. They got on a bus, and they separated all of the members of the school district into different parts of the bus, so that they could drive around and take a look at some of the areas, some of the schools, that might be redistricted, to see, you know, how it would play out in the real world. Well, unfortunately, they didn't notice it properly as a public meeting, and they didn't create it so that the public could participate in that bus trip. So, they found that they held that that was inappropriate, that was a meeting, it was a public meeting, and they shouldn't have done it that way. So, these are the things that the Attorney General and the states, the courts in the state of Florida are out there trying to make sure that this state law is enforced. Now, when you have a public meeting, you have to provide reasonable notice of it. That's one of the requirements for Government in the Sunshine. It has to be open to the public, and you have to take minutes which are then made promptly, publicly available. Now, what you don't have to do is, you don't have to provide a tape. We do, but you don't have to. You don't have to allow the public to speak at public meetings. That's a common misunderstanding. Now, there are certain types of hearings where the public has to be allowed to speak. Ordinances, second reading, are public hearings. Quasi-judicial matters, which is another kind, that's land use issues, there's an opportunity where the public has to speak. But there's a lot of, in many cities, in many local governments, there are agenda items where the public does not have a legal right to speak. Now, in the city of Palm Coast, that's not the case, because this city has chosen to pursue its specific rules and procedures to allow this public to speak on any agenda item. And there's obviously the opportunity to speak under citizen comments, but the Florida Supreme Court has said that the Public Records Law, Government in the Sunshine, does not go so far as to require the public to be able to speak on every issue that may or may not be on the agenda. So, what have been some of the issues regarding Government in the Sunshine? Well, you've had some, and South Florida's always been in the news, little South Florida. They always take the lead in pushing the envelope for compliance, or in a lot of times in their cases, non-compliance with the Sunshine Law. But there was a city in Southern Florida where their councilmembers, their commissioners, were using their private email accounts, and they were caught. And there was a lawsuit, and then the city had to pay attorney's fees, and the decisions that were made were challenged. Public officials, I mentioned this earlier, public officials need to be careful, because they can be responsible for their own attorney's fees if they get caught with their hands in the jar, the candy jar. I've added on the last page of this memorandum, and this is something that the city attorneys have noticed, that's tempting, and that is that you'll receive an email, and it'll be from a councilmember. And there's nothing wrong with that. There's nothing wrong, there is nothing wrong with one councilmember sending an email to another councilmember. Let me say it again, there is nothing wrong with one councilmember sending an email to another councilmember. The problem starts as when that recipient councilmember responds to the first one, to the first councilmember. That's a communication. So, let's say that you get an email, and it's from a councilmember, Smith, to someone else, and Councilmember Jones is copied. And then what happens is, is Councilmember Jones responds to that third party, but pushes "Reply All." Well, that's just been a Government in the Sunshine violation, so I'm pointing my finger at my bosses and say, "Never push 'Reply All,'" because that's a good way to get in trouble. So, that's pretty common. There are certain things that you have to be careful about, more appearance than substance. And that is that conversations, and this has happened to commissioners and councilmembers in other jurisdictions, where they'll be, they'll get to a council meeting, and the council meeting will start at 7:00, and they'll get there at 6:30, and they'll be talking beforehand. And we're all human beings, and by not intentionally, but they might start talking about city business, and they can't do that. During breaks, they're in the middle of a really hot and heavy contested matter, they take a 15-minute break, because they've been going at it for five hours, and they just can't sit still any longer. They take a 15-minute break. What do human beings do? They want to talk about what they've just been talking about for three hours. Can't do that. After the meetings, during the meetings, you can't lean over and talk to each other. Now, a recent example that's happened is this, remember, I go back to this technology. What happened in some cities is that they found that councilmembers had their iPads or their laptops or their cellphones, and they were emailing each other or tweeting each other. Now, that's an obvious no-no. Even though it's at a city meeting, that doesn't make it a public communication. So, that's something that they can't do, and of course, all these gentlemen are well aware of that. So, again, I don't want anyone in the audience to think that by having this conversation with my council and with you in the audience, that we're trying to say that there's anything wrong going on. But I think it's important for the public to be made aware of exactly, first of all, that this law exists. You read about it in the newspaper, you hear about it on the radio, but sometimes it's not real clear what all that means. So, that's a very brief and probably oversimplistic overview of Government in the Sunshine. I've also prepared and was about to head into public records. Councilmembers, is there anything that you wanted to talk about, so we don't get, they can get confused? Is there anything you wanted me to add or talk about with Government in the Sunshine?
I'll just comment on one thing. A few years ago, when I was on that side of the table, you actually approached me, because I came to speak to someone, and another councilmember leaned in and kind of joined the conversation, and it was, made sense that they might do that, but that is an obvious violation. I didn't really think about it at the time, but that is something to be careful of.
Well, it is, and remember now, it's not that, there's no law that says, I mean, these folks live in the same town. You know, they've known each other for a long time. There's nothing wrong with these folks talking about outside of the public. They can talk about going to a football game, they can talk about the Lions Club, or the festival that they went to last weekend. What they can't talk about is something that's city business, something that's foreseeably, that's the law, something that's foreseeably going to come before them, that's the business, that's your business. That's the business of the taxpayers, the business of the voters, of the citizens, that you voted for these folks to do your business. It's that kind of discussion that you all can't do out of the sunshine.
That's all I had to add, yeah?
Counsel, any other questions, comments?
None yet. All right. Mayor, public records, and all of you, in fact, those of you in the audience, I'm sure, if you get a newspaper, you've been reading a lot about public records recently. But remember now, this is a different law. This is not about meetings and having meetings in the public. This is about documents, this is about records, and your access to them. And how broad is that? And it's real broad. The definition, all papers, letters, maps, books, tapes, photographs, you name it, are open for public inspection. There are exemptions, and this is created by statute, Chapter 119. If you ever have trouble getting to sleep one night, get on the internet and read Chapter 119. I guarantee you, 20 minutes later, you will be sound asleep. But it's about this thick, and the general rule is real simple, but then there's about 15 pages of exemptions. And those are made, common sense-wise, to make sure that there's certain privacy things that come up, that are documented by the governments, that the legislature feels are inappropriate to be made public. So, those are the exemptions. What I wanted to emphasize in our discussion this evening is that the form of the document, this is that second bullet point, this is key, that the form of the record is irrelevant. What it means is, is that any non-verbal documentation of a communication, again, a public record, not a private record, any non-verbal documentation of a communication related to Palm Coast government business is a public record. Now, if you have an email, or a tweet, or something on Facebook, or a letter, an old-fashioned piece of paper, and it doesn't have to do with Palm Coast, that's not a public record, even if you're the author, and it's even if it's on your city laptop, it's still a private record. The form of the record is irrelevant. The location of where it's kept is irrelevant. It's the substance of the record that is everything. Now, let's get back to technology. It's easy to understand, and when a councilmember sends a letter, and it has to do with an ordinance, or a resolution, or some matter that's on agenda, that's a public record. It gets a little bit more confusing when you use your cellphone to send an email, or you receive a tweet. Is that right? Twitter? You receive that, you go on someone's Facebook, and you make a comment about someone's Facebook page, and you make a comment about city business. Those are public records, and they have to be maintained like any other public record. And that's dangerous, and there's a lot of local governments that are learning that recently, how dangerous that is, because I'm sure all of you read, there's a local government in Central Florida that had a very controversial issue that came up recently, and during the public hearing on that controversial issue, the members of that governing, that local government body, were receiving emails and tweets, and it had to do with what they were discussing. And after that meeting, now, there's nothing, that in and of itself is not illegal, it's not a violation of Government in the Sunshine, they weren't talking to each other, they were receiving information, and they were getting it in this electronic format, but it clearly had to do with governmental business, the business of that government, the business of that public, of its voters. And what the problem was, is that after that meeting, the very next day or soon thereafter, someone made what's called a public records request for all electronic communications pertaining to, and whatever the topic was. Well, the problem was that a lot of those folks in the government either didn't know how to save those tweets and emails, or they had deleted them. And I don't know about you, but after I get an email on my cellphone from my son asking me to put more money into his account, I delete it, because I don't want to have to look at that again.
Is that before or after you send the check?
It's before and after. I would delete it as many times as I could, but that's what you do, that's what people do. And so, you have to be careful when you're a government official, that you cannot do that. You either have to choose not to use your electronic communications for government business, that's one option, or if you're going to use your electronic communications, you have to coordinate with the city clerk, or whoever else is in charge of public records, it's usually the clerks, to make sure that those electronic communications are saved, so that when, and if, a city or a county receives a public records request, those emails can be produced responsive to that public records request. And that shows you how far the state of Florida goes to make sure that the decisions, and how the decisions are made by local governments, are made available to people like you, who want to know how those decisions were made. In other words, maybe the backstory. So, Mayor, councilmembers, those are, that's kind of in a nutshell, the big picture. I've not covered all the details in this, but I wanted to make sure that the public knew, and that you knew, that we're pretty well protected. The state of Florida does a really good job. I've read many times that the reputation of the state of Florida is that, from a legal standpoint, local governments are the most transparent. Not saying everyone follows the rules, but the laws and the rules require the most transparency in local government in our country.
Thank you. Council questions on the second half of the presentation?
Was that presentation made pro bono?
It's all included in one very reasonable price.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number five, first reading of an ordinance, amending an ordinance providing for the contraction of the Grand Haven for the contraction of the Grand Haven Community Development District boundaries. Mr. Raishman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of ordinance number 2003-11 that adopted and incorporated Flagler County ordinance number 9703, which established the boundaries of the Grand Haven Community Development District within the city of Palm Coast. This is pursuant to an interlocal agreement recorded in the official records book 952, page 1527, between the county and the city. This provides for the city to administer matters under the city's jurisdiction that pertain to the Grand Haven Community Development District. This provides for the contraction of the Grand Haven Community Development District boundaries by removing parcel ID number 7113140s, 0103040s, that's the deleted property, as described in Exhibit A to this ordinance, providing for conflict severability, non-codification, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, CDD or Community Development District is actually a taxing district. It's with a very special purpose. And the Grand Haven development is covered by a CDD. It was established many years ago and obviously a number of things have changed. And as a result of some of those changes, there's this small piece, less than an acre, that the Grand Haven Board of Directors of the CDD has asked that this area be removed from their boundaries. And the new property owner, who is also the property owner of the Grand Living's development that has recently been approved, concurs with that request. So we are presenting this to you tonight to just fulfill the request of the CDD and the property owner. Has no effect on services, no effect on zoning, it's just actually helping implement the development plans for the Grand Living's proposal that has already been approved. So this is just kind of boilerplate implementation. Sarah is here to answer any additional questions you may have. This is an ordinance, so there's two readings, but this is the first reading. And we are recommending approval of this kind of ministerial-type proposal.
Any council questions? Counsel question first half. Seeing no one open the meeting to the public, anyone who would wish to want to be heard on Agenda Item Number Five, please approach the podium, give us your name, limit your contribution to three minutes. Anyone wish to be heard? Agenda item number five. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, go back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Nett?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number six, appoint four members to fill openings on the Leisure Services Advisory Committee. Virginia, you want to give us some background on the ballot?
There is several candidates, approximately 10 of them, that have applied. The four that are currently on the board are applying again to be reappointed. Member Julius Kwitikowski will require a four-fifths vote because he has already been appointed a couple of terms. And although the charter does not specify that each district be represented, it's been counseled standard that each is to diversify so that we would look forward to having diversification on all of our boards. And there is one application from District Three because currently District Three is not represented.
We have a ballot. You're going to select four, understanding that if Mr. Kwitikowski is to be reappointed, While we're counting the votes, as I mentioned, if Mr. Kwitikowski receives four votes, he'll be reappointed, otherwise he will not. If any applicant receives three votes, that individual will be appointed. If there are not four or three who receive three votes, then we will narrow it down to those receiving two votes.
Okay, we have Eleanor Milberg has received four votes. Julius Kwitikowski has received three votes. Jane Culpepper, three votes. And Lisa Andress-Zajek has received three votes. Mr. Kwitikowski has not received the required four-fifths vote.
Okay.
And then we have no other majority. So we have two for Kosenza. So that would go, all of them go back.
So we have three that are essentially appointed or will be appointed. How many do we have remaining that have at least two votes?
One has two votes. And Kwitikowski has three.
But he needed four.
He needed four.
Well, we can run him back and choose between those two.
Do you want to choose between those two?
Well, the one who got two votes does not qualify and the one who got three votes does not qualify. Everyone else apparently had one vote, so I would recommend that we limit our balloting to the two that received at least two votes, a minimum of two votes. Unless counsel has any other...
Can we have a discussion?
Absolutely.
Hang on.
Well, Mr. Kosenza is the only applicant from District Three. We have no District Three Advisory Committee members right now, so I would advocate for Mr. Kosenza.
Well, taken. It's always been council policy to try to get, some boards require representative from each district. Some do not, but it's always been our policy to, whenever possible.
The three marked out are the three that have already been appointed.
Okay.
I thought we were just voting for two, one of two people. Did I miss something?
Your pleasure.
Two for Kwitikowski, one for Balgacian, and two for Kosenza.
My goodness.
Now, I can continue.
I would suggest that you narrow it down to the two that had two votes and then you can't have a tie at that point.
That would be my suggestion also, my initial suggestion. Let's try it one more time. While we're preparing the ballots, let me just comment that there are a number of opportunities for citizens to participate in local government. Some of the boards have a certain amount of autonomy and authority, the Code Enforcement Board, the Planning Board. Other boards are strictly advisory to City Council, but in every opportunity, it's residents who are serving without pay to promote the best interests of their city. And actually, we owe a debt of gratitude to all members, past, present, and future, who serve on these boards.
Kwitikowski needs a four-fifths vote.
Well, we can keep this up all night.
Why don't we flip a coin?
I'm sure, if I may.
Mr. DiLorenzo.
I'm sure Mr. Kwitikowski has done a fine job, but he has served two complete terms, eight years, same as we are limited to, eight years. And so I will once again advocate for Mr. Kosenza.
Well, speaking for Mr. Kolokovsky, whatever his name is, I think he has the right to still volunteer services if he wants to do that.
Absolutely.
It's the same results, three to two.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Lisa Andretek, Jane Culpepper, and Eleanor Milberg?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Council members, I will listen to your suggestions. I'm not a big fan of coin toss on something like this because you must get four votes for one or three votes for the other. We can table this appointment and bring it up again.
Well, we can't waste too much more time on it, so maybe we should table it and bring it up another time.
Counsel, is that fair enough? All right. We've made those three appointments. We will keep the last appointment off for the discussion.
I ask a question about, are we tabling it for the decision on one of the two that we just voted on, or are the people who were eligible be party again?
As far as I'm concerned, the whole list is eligible for consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Minus those that have been appointed.
Yes, minus those that have already been appointed. Yes. We're not appointing anybody twice. Okay. Agenda item number seven, appoint a City Council member to the Volusia Transportation Planning Organization for 2013. Let me give you a little background on this. Federal government provides money to states for transportation. The state Florida Department of Transportation allocates that money to projects within the state. By federal law, any areas within a state that are considered urbanized must be represented on what is called a TPO, Transportation Planning Organization. The theory behind this is that rather than just taking federal dollars and state dollars and throwing them willy-nilly at projects, there ought to be some kind of a regional thought process. The classic example, you wouldn't want a four-lane road ending in a two-lane road at a city line or a county line. Because of the results of the 2010 census, Palm Coast is now considered to be part of an urbanized area. In fact, the area is named with the largest city in the urbanized area getting precedence in the naming. We are part of the Palm Coast Daytona Port Orange urbanized area, which means that for the first time, Palm Coast must have a seat in what heretofore has been called the Volusia County Transportation Planning Organization. We need to appoint somebody from the City Council to represent us on that board.
Your Honor, are we entertaining a motion at this time?
Absolutely.
I move that the council appoint John Nett to this position.
Common consent, second.
Is there consensus?
Yes.
I will take it for a year and we'll see where it goes from there. It's going to be a very interesting situation because the Volusia TPO has had its list of projects prioritized in existence. We've had our list of projects prioritized in existence. Somehow, we're going to have to work to meld them together. Somehow, we're going to have to determine what portions or all of Flagler County is represented. So there's some work to be done. Anyway, thank you very much for your confidence. This brings us to the consent agenda, items eight, nine, and 10. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. This brings us to the public participation portion of the meeting. It's an opportunity for the public to speak on any item not on today's agenda. Please give us your name, limit your contribution to three minutes. Who'd like to go first?
Good evening. This is the jury of Palm Coast. I'm going to talk about water and sewer. The proposed water and sewer repair and replacement expense of $78 million equals approximately $1,040 per city resident or $2,400 per dwelling. There is no question in my mind that this must be subject to further examination, review, and options prior to voting on this issue. Gentlemen, I have this. How and why did we get to this point? Does the city have a debt limit? What is the current total outstanding debt? What is the annual debt service payment? What is the impact of the $78 million on overall city debt? Has the council considered the use of the half-cent local option sales tax, $2 million for Palm Coast? Monroe County, Florida, has a one-cent sales tax for water and sewer. Do we utilize loans from the Florida Clean Water Revolving Loan Program? Interest rates 40% below market rates. What about the U.S. Department of Commerce, Public Works? Loans used by communities in economic decline? We qualify. How about pay-as-you-go financing? What about appropriation of funds from city revenue? How about stormwater fees on empty lots in established subdivisions? Here is my proposal. Establish a Palm Coast Water Authority, transfer all base charges, water, sewer, stormwater, garbage, et cetera, to the city tax bill. Taxpayers can then deduct these expenses on their federal tax. Leave current usage charges alone. The base charge would be the funding mechanism for repair and replacement via a special annual assessment for additional funds. The Water Authority would have a governing body comprised of the city manager, two water company executives, and two citizens appointed. Gentlemen, we, the citizens, have to manage our money. We need a clear picture of what you do with our money. Do not make decisions by how much public attendance you obtain on any subject because Palm Coast residents have shown that they are apathetic about voting and... Palm Coast residents have shown that they are apathetic about voting and civil matters. A referendum is needed. Thank you.
Before our next speaker, Mr. Legori presented a whole host of options. Mr. Quinn, I'm going to ask you to jot these down, keep track of them, so that we can consider them at our next workshop. I'm sorry. Proceed.
Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Tom Lawrence. I'm here to talk to you about the water and sewer rate proposal. Since the city owns the water and sewer company, the city council acts as our public service commission in deciding whether or not rate increases should be granted and how much they should be. Therefore, in this role, you act as the advocates of the resident ratepayers. The current proposal on the table with a 24% rate increase in 22 months is designed to raise the capital needed to fund required improvements over the next five years in a fashion that minimizes the cost to the utility fund but ignores the impact on the rates paid by the resident users. Let me be clear. A rate increase of 24% in 22 months seems excessive and is unacceptable. As my advocate, I ask you to work with the staff to generate options for the required capital that minimizes rates even if it means the utility has to take on more debt. After reviewing the PRMG study, I suggest several following areas that could potentially lower rates. Number one, the current proposal recommends increasing R&amp;R fund from 5% to 10% of current revenue. I've looked at the projects being funded by R&amp;R, and they all seem to be long-term projects with lives of 20 years or more. I wonder why we're funding long-term projects out of current revenue. It seems more appropriate that we should take about 90% of the R&amp;R funding and put it under capital, and thereby we could reduce our current revenue requirements by up to $2.4 million per year. That would reduce the amount you'd have to charge in rates. The second thing I'd like you to look at is that the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund should establish a critical goal of annual savings equal to the anticipated inflation. This is common practice in the private sector. It works very effectively. It offsets inflation. And if you did that, and you did it successfully, you could generate a savings of about $317,000 per year. This would allow the council to eliminate the proposed CPI rate adjustments in the future. These are only several ideas. I'm sure that our very competent staff can generate even more specific options than offered above. I again ask you to act as the resident advocate when you review additional options at the February 12th workshop. I ask that your goal, on our behalf, be to raise the needed capital at the very lowest resident rates. I also ask that you postpone the second reading of the proposed ordinance on 2/19, and instead discuss on 2/19 the results of your February 12th workshop, where you're going to be looking at other options, and then at the following meeting, you can have your second reading. That way, the public will have a chance to input, since we can input at the workshop. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Ron Radford is my name. I recently received some disturbing information concerning the historical utility rate schedule here in Palm Coast. Since its conception, we have had over 324 rate increases. Why?
Next speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. I come not just to protest the proposed or discussed water and sewer rates, but I'd like to draw your attention to a lot of information that I don't think has even been recognized, let alone been considered. I've done some research on it. A lot of this information is very, very difficult to get because it's not something that most communities are very proud of. And that's the invisibles, the faceless people in this community. We tend to have, I think maybe Americans are wired this way, we have an iceberg vision. We see 10% of a problem, we immediately jump to it and say, "Let's solve that." Meanwhile, there's 90% more that's unseen under the water. And here's part of what's unseen and not taken into consideration. This community has 52 food pantries that operate within its borders. 52 food pantries. And I can guarantee you, they are not throwing food away at the end of the day that they operate. It's gone. One of the agencies, just one, in 2010, in the first eight months, served 7,842 people in this community, not the county, but in this community. 2,650 of them were children under the age of 17. There are statistics that indicate, two states in particular, Texas and Arizona, that projects the number of jail cells they're going to need in 10 years and 15 years down the road based on the reading scores of fourth graders in the elementary schools. We have 62% of the students in this community that are on free or reduced-rate breakfast and lunch because their parents cannot afford to provide them with a decent meal that they must have to go to school and learn. Homeless figure in 2011 in Flagler County, over 100 adults, over 250 children homeless. These are not just people that are on food stamps and other aid. These are people that are living in vans and cars, and children sleeping in dumpsters, believe it or not, overnight, and sometimes getting their meal out of the dumpster behind a local restaurant in town. Gentlemen, that is a shame. We should all be ashamed of that. So these are items that are not recognized. What happens is, when we start and you say five dollars--
Fifteen seconds, sir. Fifteen seconds.
Okay. I would humbly request an additional minute so I could tie these numbers together.
Council members?
Sure.
You have one minute.
Okay, thank you. We're reaching a tipping point. You say, "Well, $5.60," this is what Mr. Adams said, "$5.60, that just means you can't buy two more bottles of water." This has a lot more to do than just buying two more bottles of water. What happens is, as we push more people into that homeless category, the problem compounds. It doesn't grow by just the addition of the fee for the water. It starts growing exponentially. And then eventually, the more people we push into that category, we wind up one morning and we find out we're living in Detroit, or Chicago, or Newark, or the South Bronx. Gentlemen, that's unacceptable, and I think this needs to be considered, not only in the water and sewer rate, but any future contemplated increases. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. McDonald, as prior requested an additional two minutes to his three.
Acceptable, the council? For the public, council policy is to provide three minutes' public speaking time. If there is a prior request to a council member, that can be extended at the wishes and the will of the council. So, Mr. McDonald, you have five minutes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Good evening. Welcome to the impromptu meeting of the Palm Coast Water and Sewer Utility Company Stockholders Meeting. We're all here because the management of our investor-owned utility has not been expanding the water and sewer services by billing the stock, you have been billing it, to the stockholders and ratepayers, and not requiring the land developers, who must have our services to expand their developments to ante up. We are about to undergo a change in management direction, a new directive from the stockholders. No more expanded service off our backs. Bill the big boys. This change in direction needs to include a new manager. Mr. Landon, a senior manager, this past October reviewed, or excuse me, revealed, he missed to the tune of $435,000. Well, in my view, it was $733,000 and more. Mr. Landon, our senior manager, what was it at all that he missed? It seems he believed that someone other than the utility was going to pay for the future powering of the wellfields. I read the documents pertaining to his claim. Item number two of the easement from Rayonier simply states, "All electric distribution lines, all above ground, all water pipes and lines on permanent easement property must be buried underground in a minimum of a 22-inch vertical cover to avoid any interference with forestry operations or fire break grading or maintenance," and so on. I've dealt with these types of documents my entire career and find his claim juvenile. Let's look at what else our senior manager has been doing. Operating outside of the city limits of Palm Coast. The future wellfields have been developed west of Route 1 on Rayonier land that is in the county with a cost of $5 million of our money. Simply put, you have no authority to do so. I went to the asspraiser's office, to Mr. Gardner's office, to check this yesterday, and it is, in fact, true that it is not city property, in the confines of the city, it is in the county. As for the council, especially past members, excuse me, we clearly have the wrong management team, along with the wrong chairman of the board, Mr. Nets. All of us who have lived in Palm Coast for more than a month know that Mr. Landon and Mr. Nets operate in concert. As for the council, especially past members, there's plenty of blame for sleeping on the switch. Going forward, what are our options? I spoke with the Attorney General's Office, and they informed me they have no oversight, only the courts who require that the city utilities' decisions are fair and just. This works to the stockholder's advantage, though, as we have no requirements to provide service for big land developers, which is exactly what got us into this present debacle that we're in. In the world outside the Landon-Nets fiefdom, a city would create a separate water sewer authority with elected members of a board. This would prevent co-mingling that Mr. Mayor Nets says does not exist. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, the very same people who run and oversee the city are not even changing seats to operate and oversee our utility. That's co-mingling and a conflict of interest that damages us, the stockholder users. Your statement defies logic. The Attorney General's Office left me with excellent advice. Mr. McDonald, the only people who can change your rates are the council and the mayor. It is all up to the voters of your city to make the change if required. As for Mr. Landon, our senior manager, I will tell you that in a non-government world, the real world that I came from, you would have offered a prompt resignation on a mistake of a half a million dollars. We are here for that resignation. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Vicki Hardley. I've been a proud resident of Palm Coast for 11 years. I have been retired for seven, and I love living here. Last week, I received my social security check, which, for some reason now, is $80 less than I was receiving. I am a single person. My husband has been deceased for seven years. I live by myself. It has gotten to the point with my water that I have it down to a science to take a shower. I used to enjoy a shower, sing, the whole thing, you know? Now I get in and it's, take the bar of soap and go down one side of your body, come up the other side, hope to God you get rinsed off, and get out. I put my garbage out once every week and a half because I live by myself and I am a green person. I try to have as minimal as I can. Gentlemen, my bill consistently is $65. I am your ideal resident. I use very few services of this county. I don't cost you any money, and I do spend my money here. However, I cannot afford to continue to pay this amount in a water bill. It's ridiculous.
Good evening. My name is Mike Gerato, and I live in Palm Coast. I was overwhelmed by all these speakers. I lose track of what they're saying. What I would need is a very simple thing, since the attorney says we're entitled to look at any report. What I would like to do is to see a copy of the financial record of the water company, their income and their expenditures, so that we could look at where the money is going and coming in, and if this rate increase is justified. So if there's a way, you could either send me a copy or put it in the newspaper so all the citizens could see it, and then we'd have a better understanding of why a rate increase is needed, or should we be cutting some frivolous spending? Thank you for your consideration.
Next speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council.
We'll get to the mic. Thank you.
Good evening, still. My name is Charlie Roth. I'm a resident of Palm Coast. What I was going to ask the council to do is, if we could possibly explore the possibility along one of our paths of putting in a pet memorial, similar to the children's memorial that we have in Lanier Park, but specifically for pets. The majority of the people that come to Palm Coast come from out of state. They settle here, and in many, many, many cases, they bring their pets with them. Their children are scattered throughout the United States, and in turn, the pets go to wherever pets may go while they're living here in Palm Coast. I think some way of memorializing the pets that they've brought with them from New York, Wisconsin, wherever they may have come from, is something that we could look at and maybe possibly something that we could do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Ron Kubo. I'm a resident of Palm Coast. When I moved here, there was sizable money for the water company because the house was vacant, and they said they charged $52 a month to make sure that they could clean up from floods and whatever. Now, I would like to know, what happened to that money? Do we have a fund for that? I mean, $52 a month for every lot all through Palm Coast? That should be a sizable amount of money. And I was told that you do this so you can have cleanup after any storm or anything, flooding or whatever. Now, that's what I was told. I may be incorrect, I may be naive, but if I'm not, if I am or not, I'd like to know, do you have a fund of such, and is that why you charge $52 a month whether the water's used or not? And then, if you have it, are you accountable? And where did it go? Thank you.
Get you an answer to that question. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Viviana Guimaro, and I'm a resident of Palm Coast. And my parents purchased property here in 1972. It was a dot on the map. It was a dot on the map. We were in Maryland. There was a Hilton meeting, and we all went, and we came and saw the properties. We fell in love with Florida. We fell in love with Palm Coast. And I can honestly tell you, I was here, I moved to Palm Coast from St. Augustine in 1996, and by 1997, I purchased the house in the Woodlands, which I love living there. And I just could not believe, by 1999, what a disaster became of Palm Coast when we had this council meetings and we have a council. We had no problems when we were not a city. Now we having all these issues, and, you know, God only knows why. I can’t understand it, you know? I’m sure everybody’s making pretty good wages, but in the meantime, we’re the ones, are the investors of this water company, we are the ones that are suffering, the stockholders, you know? And it’s getting crazier and crazier every day. Are we at Agenda 21 of Palm Coast? Is that what’s happening?
My name is Joe Kabaski, Palm Coast resident for 13 years.
My name is Joe Kabaski, and I’m a Palm Coast resident for 13 years. When I came down here from up north, I was paying $18 a quarter for my water in New York, Long Island, and we had the best water in the world. Down here, we’re paying 60-something dollars, okay? It’s chlorinated, and I understand why. Why are we paying 60-something dollars, and Miami-Dade, which is a far bigger community, by the water like we are, are paying $42? So I’d like you to take a look at that. Why we’re so much more expensive than Miami-Dade? Thank you.
Bob Jergel, Palm Coast resident, Mr. Mayor Council. I’d like to echo some of the echoes of the people who talked today. Mr. Nets, you’ve been appointed to this particular organization of Volusia County and Flatter County, and the primary name is Palm Coast. That Palm Coast is the only one of the communities that doesn’t have a Y and doesn’t have a senior community center. I don’t understand why we don’t, since we are the primary, we’re the biggest city, larger than Daytona, larger than Ormond Beach, larger than Holly Hill, who all have senior citizen centers and Ys close by. Secondly, I bring up some old chestnuts of mine. I just wonder, when are we going to pave Old Kings Road south for an utility drive down to the main drag? I’ve been asked that for three or four years. I’ve been told by Mr. Landon that it’s on the list. I drive it three times a week, it destroys my car. It’s so bad. Okay. One last comment, it’s my old horse chestnut, he doesn’t pay attention about, is I fail to understand the unanimous consent of all the members of this council of the Metanza Woods I-95 interchange. I don’t understand it. It does not, it hurts the residents of Palm Coast. Place again, interchange in the middle of a residential area with proximity to a high school is ludicrous. I think the false rationale offered by some members of council and by county commissioners is emergency exit. No need for emergency exits. We have plenty of them to go to the north. The only reason, and I’ll echo this previous, one of the previous speaker’s thing, that the emphasis of council seems to be on developers. The only benefit of a Metanza Woods interchange is for the developers of the property west of I-1. They will get all the advantage and be able to sell their lots by advertising close proximity to the interchange. I ask you, please, to reconsider and think about the interchange and what it does to the residents of the L and the P and the B and the F and the F sections of Palm Coast, which will be given access to all the traffic on the internet to our neighborhoods and to our schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Janet McDonald, Palm Coast. And since we’re on the idea of roads, I would like to ask this council to either make a project or direct a volunteer project group to save the little piece of Palm Coast that we have left that drew us all to Palm Coast, and that’s Palm Coast Parkway East. Before our planning department that started what it’s doing in blight construction with the creation of the city and the 100% coverage for parking and block-box stores in our new developments, before we removed the beautiful canopy and the signature tree scape that we apparently are nicknamed the Tree City of Florida, we need to remember that we have a beautiful treasure here that we need to protect before any other development goes on between Old Kings and the Toll Bridge. We do have some blight construction right now at the end of Palm Coast Parkway, out of scale, ill-placed, ill-planned, and illegally-planted monuments that identify a very beautiful section of town as if it were an exit off the interstate with our new city signs. They are blazing at night, and I don’t think we need to have a Walmart sense at that end of town. I took a little drive last night by the Palm Harbor Golf Club, and it seems there are two very small security lights on the front and the back doors of the clubhouse. Their monument sign is not lit at night because who needs a lit golf club sign? But the one that’s at the mouth of Palm Harbor Drive that is illegally cited well off the property limits of Palm Harbor Golf Course, many hundreds of yards away from the property line, is lit by very, very bright LED or some extreme lighting features. We need to have a timer on that at the very least. 10 o’clock would be appropriate. And the other thing is there’s a lighting structure that’s illuminating the back end of the panther in the median that is a visible distraction for people traveling east as they co-enter the turn lane for the left-hand turn into Palm Harbor Drive. So if you could adjust that, that would be great, so that we don’t have drivers trying to figure out what in the world is the back of the cougar lit for. It’s really not a pleasant art sign at that point at night. It is a beautiful structure and needs to be highlighted the right way. The other one that faces the cougar actually drives right, or faces right into the driver’s eyes, and it would be appreciated--
15 seconds.
Thank you. It would be appreciated if that could be turned down so it doesn’t have that distracting effort. Thank you very much.
My name is Kenneth Wayne Wright. I live here in Palm Coast, have for 11 years. My name is Kenneth Wayne Wright. I live here in Palm Coast, have for the last 11 years. I just kind of wonder, you need to save money, right? Why the garbage trucks? Why we have three pickups a week? Why? Do we really need it? Does it stink that bad? We need three garbage trucks every week? Save some money. Get rid of some of them. You only need one pickup. Thank you.
Hi, I’m Rose Panetta. I live in Palm Coast. And I mean, we need money for a lot of projects, and I understand the water company is one. Do you think maybe, like all the landscaping, which in my opinion is overkill at this point, maybe we could cut down on some of the landscaping and save money there? And when you’re coming out from some of the side streets onto a lot of the main streets where you have all those fluffy grasses there, and the grasses are getting so tall, like in the summer, you can’t see traffic coming, and you have to go out even further. I don’t know if anybody else has noticed that, but I have. And I’m just wondering how many more times we’re going to landscape Belt Air. This is-- It’s almost as though we’re trying to keep the landscaper in business. I’m a nurse. I work at the hospital. In the medical profession, if you perform a procedure to keep a doctor’s office or a hospital in business, it’s called fraud. I don’t know if that’s what’s going on, but I really think that maybe that’s one place we could cut down on money and put it into the water company. But then we wouldn’t have to use as much to water all that landscaping, so we’d be saving money there, too, I think. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a request, and I don’t know how difficult it is.
Name, please.
Linda Hanson, Palm Coast. How tough would it be to make the Old Kings, not Old Kings Road, Palm Coast Parkway from the bridge to I-95 a scenic route so that we don’t remove any of those trees and we leave it alone and agree to look at it again in five or 10 years? You have some of the most magnificent tree canopy anywhere in the country, right here on this area, and you’re getting ready to take it down. I don’t know how many people are aware of that. Those big old trees next to your beautiful gas station and Palm Harbor Parkway are all due to be torn down. I know that you’re going to replant. But think about this. I mean, this is important. This is eye appeal, and this is serious. Could we do maybe what the federal government should be doing and make some decision, try something, and set a time limit, and then reinvestigate it and look at it later? It’s just a suggestion. I would, to me, this is the most beautiful area I’ve ever seen. The mayor told us a story the other night about an area south of here he didn’t think was so pretty. Let’s not destroy this right away. Let’s take a look and reinvestigate and agree that we’ll look at it again in five or 10 years. I hope you’ll agree to that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Doug Chozyannan. I live in Marina Cove in Palm Coast. And frankly, I was here because of the 23% increase in the water bill, which I think is outrageous. But I couldn’t help these two ladies talking, I couldn’t help but get up and elaborate on the two ladies that were talking about trees. I live just north of the canal, right near the Hammock Dunes Bridge. And if you guys remember, you approved a Centex project, and you approved tearing down a nice old motel that had a beautiful bar that served the community, and it had beautiful trees. And you know what we have now? Garbage. Nothing. Grass, weeds. Most of the trees are gone. And the developer, what they did is they cut the canopies of some of the remaining large trees that opened them wide, and the trees really never recovered. They’re just waiting to die. And I think it’s outrageous that you folks are not paying attention to the ambience of Palm Coast and are not paying attention to the residents where they can’t afford these outrageous increases in water bills. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Alan Capshaw. I’m a resident of Palm Coast. And my issue has to do with the utility rate increase. All I want to know is, what’s the plan? Why are we getting these rate increases? Have things been earmarked? Are we going to be retiring bonds? Is it for salary increases? Is it for mistakes in judgment? Is it for projects? New wells, new sewer lines? Is it for staffing increases? What are we doing? Are we replacing plant and equipment? Have these, has the rate increases, have we got it earmarked? Do we know where this money is going to go? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Obst. I’m a resident of Palm Coast. My husband and I have lived here for the last 12 years, and I’ve been selling real estate in Palm Coast for the last 11 years. Not only do I sell homes in Palm Coast, I sell Palm Coast. I drive people around day after day after day, and I show them everything that’s in Palm Coast. The beautiful trees, which I hadn’t heard were going to be torn down as a plan, is one of the selling points that attracts people, the beauty that’s here. The landscaping is wonderful, but yes, I must agree with that lady that was up here. It is a little bit of overkill, but it is beautiful, and people love it. They tell me how clean our city is and how much they love it, and I share with them how much I love it. One of the hardest things to sell them on, or when I tell them, one of the things that I hate bringing up to them, is our water rate and how much we pay for water and garbage here. They’re always shocked. Now I’m going to have to tell them we’re going to have a 24% increase in that? The idea is to bring people into this town, to bring it back, to get people, to get it thriving again. You know, we need business, we need industry, we need people here to own these empty houses. We need the beauty. I think we need to stop and think about really what we’re doing to Palm Coast. Are we making it better? Are we making it worse? My husband and I moved here from California, 12 years ago, like I said, and we loved it. It was beautiful. It was quiet. It was a little piece of paradise to us. You know, we were, had it with the rat race, like many of you, I guess, that moved from up north. I’m not familiar with up north. I would love to see it stay that way. So I really urge you to consider what everybody is saying here tonight, because I think everybody has a really good point to what they’re saying. So just please listen to us all and consider that. Thank you.
My name is John Slawinski. I live in Palm Coast. I’d like to ask the council and the mayor how much money they have borrowed, if you’re allowed, out of the utility fund for other projects such as road widening, landscaping, and things like that? Have they borrowed money out of the utility fund? Why is there no effort to collect the $10 million that was sold to the taxpayers to build the golf course? That was why the golf course was built. It wasn’t sold as to write off the loan, and there’s also a $1 million CRA loan that’s been recommended to write off as a bad loan. So I feel like the council and the mayor should make some effort to collect some of that money that has been used on the golf course, the $10 million that was sold to the-- the taxpayers to build that place, the CRA down there on Route 100, and how much money have you borrowed out of the utility fund for nonutility things? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Last chance. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting and come back to council. Let's see. Couple of the first speakers had some alternative funding suggestions, and I've asked Mr. Quinn to look at those and bring those back to council. Chris, the next speaker, one of the next speakers, talked about 324 rate increases.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm not sure what that's referring to. In the time that the city has owned the utility, there was one non- CPI rate increase, which was 12.5% effective in 2008. Since that point, there has been an average, I believe, of 1.7% CPI from 2009 to present, and there have been no other utility rate increases.
One of the speakers talked to Mr. Lennan. I'm going to give you an opportunity to respond, but one of the speakers alluded to the fact that there was something wrong with the city of Palm Coast developing wellfields outside the city limits. Coming from up north, I can tell you that New York City gets a lot of its water from the Catskills, which is about 200 miles further north. You go where the water is to get it. Part of the problem, and this will address one of the other questions, why is our rate, why are our rates higher than Miami-Dade? There are, and Mr. Adams could probably do the better job on this than I could, but there are three components to a water system. There's acquisition, there's treatment, and there's distribution. Distribution is relatively the same, no matter where you are. It's the pipes in the ground that get the water from the water treatment plant to your home. That's pretty much a common cost, not a lot cheaper, not more expensive in one jurisdiction or another. Cost of treatment depends entirely on the quality of the water provided to the treatment plant. When I lived in New Jersey, Hackensack Water Company got its water from rocky reservoirs. The water that you were pulling out of these reservoirs was drinkable as it was. You had to do a little bit of treatment to meet EPA standards, but there was very, very little additional treatment needed. And then the third component is acquisition. Wouldn't it be nice if we lived at the foot of a mountain, and the snow melted and ran that into a reservoir? We'd get water really cheap. But the reality is that where we are located, we do not have a good, large-volume source of water. That is why we have to go to a whole series of shallow wells, because the St. John's Water Management District, it regulates our water consumption, tells us that you can't go deeper, you can't pump harder, so you have to do more and more wells. Where we are has a direct impact on the cost of acquisition and the cost of treatment. The treatment that our water requires far exceeds the treatment that other water utilities may have. This is simply a question of geography. As far, so another question had to do with, I'd like to see the P&amp;L statement. If you'll see Mr. Quinn after the meeting, he'll be happy to tell you where to get it, how to get it. All of that information is absolutely available. Several of the speakers seem to be confusing water and wastewater and stormwater. One of the speakers talked about $52 a lot, generating a fund to take care of, it sounded like hurricane damage. Different, totally separate. In fact, one of the issues that I've heard addressed tonight talks about cutting landscaping, cutting this, cutting that, and using that money to offset some of the utility costs. When Palm Coast acquired the utility, it was the decision of the council at that time to create a separate, standalone enterprise fund, a utility fund that would pay for itself. Shortly after we acquired the utility fund, St. John's River Water Management District required us to put into place, or urged, I don't know if "require" is the right word, urged us to put in place what are called conservation rates. The idea is that the more water you use, the higher the rate you pay. There's a built-in incentive to conserve. When you have a standalone utility, an enterprise fund, there is that direct correlation between how much water you use and how much your bill is. And to some extent, you can regulate the size of your bill by regulating the size of the water. The minute you start supplementing that utility with tax dollars, you've taken away that correspondence between use and cost. And you will now have a situation where all property owners, whether or not they take any benefit from the utility, will be paying money out of their adverum taxes to supplement the utility. Arguably not terribly fair. Why are we paying more than other counties? I'll try to address that. What's interesting, if you were here for the presentation from the rate consultants, somebody mentioned the low cost of water in Miami-Dade. Richard? Miami-Dade, $8 billion in the hole?
Yeah, they have a lot of differences between us and Miami-Dade. Most of them are good. First of all, you mentioned the quality of the water that they start with. They pull them from the Biscayne Aquifer, which is much more prolific and higher quality than the aquifers we get to pull from. Their wastewater treatment is secondary treatment and direct discharge to the ocean. They're currently under, I guess, review by the EPA and the DEP. They're going to have to spend major dollars improving their wastewater treatment so they can no longer discharge, secondary treated effluent into the ocean. And then the multi-billion dollar, they did a report evaluating the condition of their existing utilities. And as we've discussed in the presentations to council by the consultants, a lot of what we're asking for that's included in this rate hike is for continuing R&amp;R, replacement-type funds. Miami-Dade is in trouble for not keeping up with their maintenance, and that's the multi-billion dollar problem that they have. They've got to replace pipes and pumps and wastewater plants and water plants because they haven't kept up with the maintenance over the years. They haven't charged the rates that they need to charge to keep up with the maintenance.
Okay. I'm going to try to sort out the utility issues, then we'll come back to some of the other ones. The last speaker, or one of the last speakers, where'd my other page go? What's the plan? What about the bonds? What about expansion? What about projects? If that speaker would see either Mr. Quinn or Mr. Adams, that was pretty well outlined in the presentation that our consultants gave us, but we'd be happy to provide that PowerPoint to you and the details. But the reality is that we're not collecting money simply for the sake of collecting money. We're collecting money to do projects that have to be done. Let me give you two examples. And Mr. Adams, please correct me if I'm wrong. Right now, Palm Coast has three water treatment plants, one, two, and three. Water Treatment Plant Two is a reverse osmosis plant. You draw water from the ground, you run it through a membrane. The water that passes through the membrane is what goes into your pipes and goes to your home. The stuff that stays behind is referred to as concentrate, and it's the minerals, it's the stuff and water that flushes it away. When that plant was built, the city of Palm Coast had an EPA permit to discharge that into one of the major canals that eventually works its way down to the intercoastal. Plant works fine. The rules of the game were changed by the EPA. They refused to continue allowing us to discharge that water into the intercoastal, ultimately into the intercoastal. So there has to be a major retrofit to that plant to do water treatment in a different fashion. It's something over which we have no choice. It was not something that we did wrong. It's simply that the EPA changed the rules of the game after the plant was constructed. The other factor is our wastewater plant. We have a single wastewater plant, handles all of the wastewater, and please distinguish stormwater from wastewater. Wastewater is what happens when you run the dishwasher. Or other sewage. That's such a... Anyway, we have one plant. The regulations under which we operate say that when that plant, correct me if I'm wrong, reaches 70% of its capacity, you must start the planning process for an additional plant or for a new plant or for an expansion of the plant. We've reached that point. So we have the planning in place to develop a second water treatment plant. When you reach another criteria, you have to start construction of that plant. Now, here's where the crystal ball comes into play. How fast will Palm Coast grow? 2%, 1%? Pick a number. I don't think anybody knows, but the best guess is something known as the Bieber Report, Bureau of Economic Research, whatever, it's from the University of Central Florida. This is what they do. They do projections of growth based on a whole host of historical factors and economic factors. They've given us a rate of growth. Is it right? It's the best guess there is. It's the best estimate there is. Using that estimate, we will know when we must start constructing the second wastewater plant. Now, could we delay that a little bit and defer some of those costs? You could, at the risk of running into major fines from the federal and state government if you don't have the plant capacity that you need. On the other hand, if you defer it and growth is slower than what you anticipate, lucky guess. But ultimately, you're going to have to build that plant. So, yeah, there are plans, there are bond recoveries, and again, if you'll see Mr. Quinn and Mr. Adams, we'll be happy to give you that information. We have it all. The last question. How much was borrowed from the utility fund? $10 million for the golf course and $1 million from the CRA. Mr. Quinn, can you do it in reverse order? CRA. CRA, Community Redevelopment Area, is an area that is funded by tax increment financing. I don't want to get into a long dissertation, but that money, there is a mechanism in place to generate that money. The general fund lent...
The general fund lent a little under $6 million to the CRA fund to start the redevelopment process. One of the speakers mentioned something about a $1 million write-off, which I have no knowledge of anything to that effect. In fact, per the council direction, starting in fiscal year '14, we were asked to put a plan together where the CRA starts paying those loans back, and that's the status of the CRA loans currently.
But again, although I recognize the fact that you have one wallet, and whether you take a bill out to pay for the water and take a bill out to pay your taxes, I understand all comes out of the same pocket, but CRA money has nothing to do with utility money?
That's correct. They're totally separate entities, if you will, and the funds are not mixed.
Chris, what is the interest rate that the general fund is receiving on that loan?
It's right around 5%.
Thank you.
And quite frankly, I think anybody in this room would be happy to get 5% return on their investment, so... Then there was $10 million for the golf course. That number seems incorrect.
The actual investment in the golf course was 5.5 million, approximately. That was the total sum of the investment for all capital and opening costs to get the golf course renovated and up and running.
Okay. And the first of the three questions, how much was borrowed from the utility fund for the improvements of Old Kings Road South?
That was approximately $5.3 million.
And has that money been written off?
Money has not been written off. In fact, we have a meeting with the Special Assessment District members within the next week or two to establish the final payback schedule of those funds.
And once again, the interest that the property owners are paying on that loan?
Right. The interest, the last three years, they've been paying interest on that loan, and the interest rate is 5%.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, I'm going to try to go back and fill in with some of the other. Question about a pet memorial, certainly doable, similar to the children's memorial garden that was funded almost totally by contributions. It's certainly something we could ask the Leisure Services Committee to take a look at. I think it's certainly doable. YMCA, why don't we have one? I was on a committee that was put together by the YMCA out of Volusia County, came up here. We had a series of meetings at Palm Coast data, and the short and simple answer is the YMCA has no money to build a facility. They said they would be happy to come to Palm Coast, run programs and charge for them, providing, somebody built them the facility. They put out a request to your large corporate entities, your small corporate entities, anybody willing to donate money to the fund to create a YMCA building. There was no response. The YMCA said, simply, we do not have the money to do it. That's why we don't have a, or we don't have a YMCA. Paving of Old Kings Road South, well, from Palm Coast Parkway down to Town Center Boulevard. It's like so many projects, it's in the planning phase, but it requires money. Matanzas Interchange, this is a project that is being spearheaded and driven by Flagler County. Keep in mind, well, you wouldn't keep in mind. Prior to the creation of this new transportation planning agency, all DOT dollars went through the county. The city of Palm Coast would submit its priorities, the county would mingle in its priorities. The priority list that went to DOT was ultimately created by Flagler County, and this was a high priority for them. It's a, it is a county project, not a city project. What we are desperately trying to do is, and you've heard this several times before, the Palm Harbor Parkway extension cutting up behind the high school, Old Kings Road extension cutting up behind the high school. Our goal is to try to get those bypass roads in place either before or at the same time that the interchange is created. That will alleviate traffic from the residential roads, and that is a high priority for this council, and that is something that I'm going to be discussing as if and when I wind up on the new TPO. Parkway East, the tree canopy, private property, private ownership, zoned commercial, long before we were a city. There are, and I'm going to blend into this the concept of declaring that a scenic highway and so on and so forth. Florida has an interesting piece of legislation. It's known as the Burt-Harris Act. And in essence, what it says is if any action of a local government diminishes the value of a piece of property, the local government must pay the property owner for that damages. So for example, if you have a piece of property that is zoned commercial, the city would have three options if they didn't want that property developed as commercial. Option one would be simply deny a building permit. You'd lose in court, and it'd cost you a bunch of attorney fees. Option two, you could rezone the property. And let's say you rezoned it from commercial to conservation or green space. Even green space you can build on. So let's say we rezoned it from commercial to conservation. You will now pay the property owner the value of that property. You'll pay for the appraisals, you'll pay for the property owner's attorneys. This is not something that I created. This is a creation of the Florida Legislature. The third option, if you don't want to rezone it or condemn the property... The third option, if you don't want to rezone it or condemn the property through condemnation, which you still pay for it, is to go out and buy it. This is an issue of private property rights versus public welfare, and there's a cost attached to it.
Mr. Mayor, can I add one thing?
Sure.
May I? With the 2008 Unified Land Development Code, we've increased the buffers in many places, and that is to help protect those areas. There's a much larger buffer that is required now than previous to 2008. I believe it's 35 feet. And so that will help that. Now, that does alter how development is done from a... Because you're squeezing property owners down, but that will hopefully, and I believe that was the reason for that. One of the reasons for including larger buffers was for that particular case.
Okay. I think that...
The senior center, Mr. Mayor.
The senior center?
Yeah.
It's cost.
But the question was asked.
Why don't we have a senior center? Well, we talked about one. It was turned down several years... Quite five, six years ago in a referendum. There was a referendum for two senior centers and a separate referendum for a city hall. Both were turned down. That's why we don't have a senior center. I can find my place. Discussion by city council matters not on the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Lannan, I was going to give you an opportunity since you were...
Yes, please.
...commented upon.
I actually think Mr. McDonald did me a favor if people would be willing to listen to the full story, because when you take one snapshot of time and use that as judgment, then yes, sometimes it can look really bad. But if I could tell the full history of the well sites, it's actually a story I'm very proud of. The fact of it is, is that because Palm Coast has always been earmarked to grow, we had many, many well sites that were needed for that growth. State regulations require you to spread the well sites out so that you can do not damage the aquifer more than you absolutely need to or use more than aquifer in one area. So ITT in 1994, the original developer of Palm Coast, when they still owned the utility, actually cut a deal and has a contract with Rainier, the main property owner out west of US-1. At that time, it said that there were dozens, it was that dozens of well sites out west in their silviculture area, where all the trees are that they harvest, that they... ITT would be allowed to buy at the fair market price at that time, all the necessary well sites that ITT saw necessary for Palm Coast. Move forward. ITT did not exercise those rights because did not need those, or if they did, there were very few. But when the city purchased the property, or excuse me, the utility, acquired the utility shortly after becoming a city, we also acquired, if you will, that same contractual right because we knew at that time that we were going to need additional well sites to handle our growth. But once again, it was to purchase the well sites. When I came here six years ago, I had an appraisal on my desk to start the purchase price because we were ready to start building Water Plant Number Three. And Water Plant Number Three, in order for it to produce drinkable water, had to have the raw water supply, which means we needed additional wells. That appraisal for a dozen, just 12 well sites on my desk when I came here was right at $5 million. My predecessor had already started negotiations to buy the well sites for $5 million from Rainier to accommodate the new water treatment plant that was under design and is now built. I sat down with developer, actually, Rainier has a development branch, so it was a combination of the Timber Company and their development branch, and yes, we renegotiated the deal. And those 12 sites, we were able to negotiate that they would give those 12 sites to the city at no cost. So back in, I believe it was 2007 and maybe 2008, the rate payers, we saved, based on those negotiations, Richard Adams and myself, saved the rate payers $5 million. We had three components to that purchase. One of them was actual purchase of the property where the wells are, about 70 by 100, I believe, something like that. And then we also have to have what we call a well protection zone, an area around the well where no development that would damage the water quality around the well site, and that was in the form of easement. Once again, that was given to us at no cost. Then we have the easements to run the lines from the wells to the plant. Those easements were also given to the city at no cost. In the easement document, we indicated, or the statement in there said that Rainier was to give an easement to FPNL for electrical line, subject to agreed-upon easement language. Therein lies, according to Mr. McDonald, my mistake, to tell that property owner that how their easement language had to be with FPNL is his understanding of what should happen. Because FPNL has two programs to get electricity to things like well sites where you have a long run. One of them is they'll build the lines for you. And in this case, it's about a $700,000 project. And they designed it, they took a look at, and had a price of about $700,000 to run the lines out to all our well sites. They then attempted to get the easement from Rainier and could not reach an agreement. Then kicked in option number two that FPNL also has, and that is you can run your own And we had to choose running our own lines. The difference in those two prices is we went out and also got a bid about $700,000, about 2 percent higher than FPNL, a few months later, but it was in the same range. Plan number one, though, is what FPNL will do, is that if they run the line, they're going to... They would charge the city full rate. But they would also contribute $300,000 towards the construction. And then the power charge was going to pay back that construction cost plus the cost of electricity. Option two, if we run the line, then we would have one master meter, and we would get a reduced rate, but we'd have to pay the full cost. So when you look at that one snapshot, the capital costs for the project was $300,000 more. However, the operating cost, and these pumps are not small pumps, use a lot of electricity, our ongoing operating cost in perpetuity, forever, is at what we would refer to in our business, a bulk rate, a reduced rate. So if you look at the whole picture, Richard and I negotiated a deal that saved the rate payers approximately one and a half, or excuse me, four and a half million dollars, over four and a half million dollars in capital expenses. Plus, we will have a lower operating cost when the wells come online. And then the other kicker in the whole deal was that the agreement between ITT back in 1994 was a 20-year deal. They had to purchase the wells within 20 years, which if you do your math, is 2014. So in order to preserve our right to purchase those wells, at this point, or our original plan was, was to actually go out and buy the other well sites before 2014, which is now. But in our renegotiated contract with Rainier, we extended it, I believe, for another 20 years, which means the rate payers of today do not have that multimillion-dollar purchase price that was on my desk when I came here. So an additional savings for our rate payers. So if you take the one snapshot, yes, because we went to Plan B, built our own lines on our own easements, it cost us $300,000 more. But if you look at the big picture, we saved $4.5 million in purchase price, our operating cost is going to be lower, and next year, we saved multiple millions. Not sure what's additional because we're talking dozens of sites, but we were probably in the range of $10 to $15 million of additional purchase price that we now don't have to do at this time where the rate payers today would pay. We can give you other examples of that, so that where we have actually saved dollars, I really would encourage everybody to come back in two weeks, because we will put on the whole presentation to show how we've cut costs. When our consultant came the first time, he said, "Has your cost really gone down that much in operations?" The answer is yes. So we welcome the scrutiny. We welcome that, and would hope you come back or ask for a copy that we can show you how the costs have been cut substantially, and that we're trying very hard to keep the rates down as low as possible. Thanks for the opportunity, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. McDonald, for causing me to be able to tell a story that I'm very proud of, that actually saved millions of dollars for this community.
Richard, just to put this issue of shallow wells and multiple wells into perspective, tough arithmetic, but how many million gallons of water do we pump a day?
Currently, we are averaging about 8 million, just under 8 million.
8 million gallons. How many gallons a day can you pump out of one of these wells?
Gallons per day? Well, it can vary a lot. Some of the wells produce as little as 50 gallons a minute, and some of them are up into the 450 gallons a minute. You can compare that to like what we were referring to earlier, someone that's in the Floridian aquifer or the Biscayne aquifer, where they can pump several thousand gallons a minute out of one well.
This... When we talk about wells, and I talk about acquisition costs of the water, it's because of our geography. If we were 50 miles one way or 50 miles the other way, we'd have a shot at a much cheaper source of water.
Ours is common for coastal. You'll see, you know, that a lot of the coastal communities have moved very far west to get their well to get higher quality and quantity of water. Even if we moved west here in Flagler County, or even if we went all the way to Putnam County, the water quality's not there. The water quality down in Volusia County, they go west, they get out by Blue Springs, there's all kinds of fresh water in the Floridian aquifer. We have about something in the neighborhood of 45 wells, and we can produce, out of those 45 wells, only about nine and a half million gallons a day.
Okay. Just to put things into perspective, it's not as simple. You've got to compare apples to apples. Okay. Discussion by city council matters not on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Wainwright had a question about three garbage pickups a day.
Oh, right. Well, there's not three garbage pickups. There's one recycling day, there's one white goods type household waste, and there's two garbage pickups a day. Back when the city council made this decision... A week, a week, please. It's getting late. Back when the city council made this decision, the common thought was, "Well, if my garbage bill is..." Help me out. What is it, a month?
15 something.
15 something?
Is it 15 something?
If I went to one pickup a day, it would be half of that. That's what everybody... A week. If I went to one pickup a week, it should be half of the cost of two pickups a week. The reality is, the difference was about 10 percent less if you went to one day a week, because you still have to buy the trucks, you still have to... The biggest single cost in solid waste is what they call tipping fees. You fill your truck up with this stuff, now you've got to take it somewhere, and you've got to pay to dump it. Well, if I dump a huge load once a week, or I dump two smaller loads twice a week, my tipping fees remain the same. So the savings are not there. Had the savings been anywhere close to 30, 40, 50 percent, council might very well have considered it. But the savings simply weren't there. Did I miss any other questions? Discussion by city council, Mr. McGuire.
No, Your Honor.
Mr. Lewis. Mr. DeLorenzo.
No.
Mr. Ferguson.
The topic du jour is water, but I'd like to express support for the pet memorial, that it has to be a much smaller scale than the children's memorial, but looking at the people walking down St. Joe Walkway with their pets, it's like, I think it's an appropriate, considerable project. So I'd like to express my support for that.
Thank you.
Council, would you please consider Mr. Lawrence's request for an adjustment to the scheduled meeting so that we could have another interaction time after you come back with better plans for us?
Mayor, the actual public notice, which is required by law to be in a utility bill, is for your next meeting, two weeks from today, which is the 19th, I believe, at 9:00 a.m. You have to have that public hearing. You don't have to take action at that time, but you have to have that public hearing as by law because of the notice that we put in the utility bills. At that time, you can delay it if you want, or you can take action on it at that point. It'd be your choice at that meeting.
That's a statutory requirement. Mr. Mayor, council members, Chapter 180, Section 136 places the requirement on local governments to notice that hearing, which this city did for that date, and it went out in the utility bills. So we are in compliance with the notice requirements, but we need... But we have to have it consistent with the notice that went out in the utility bill.
But we've heard two of the earlier speakers on the utility issue raise a couple of what-ifs, alternatives, so on and so forth. Mr. Quinn, you're going to get those back to our rate consultant. Council will discuss that at our workshop. If we see that there is a viable alternative, if we see that there is some other way to skin this cat, we can simply defer action at that meeting. Have the public hearing and defer action to another...
Right. You have to have that hearing, but at that hearing, you can defer or you can take action, but you... But by law, you... Unless you start all over again and do notices, and that would delay the minimum of 45 to 60 days, because we have to get back in the utility bill with notice.
Okay. Discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
No, thank you. No, thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Move to adjourn.
We stand adjourned.